To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we are in the citizens' comments time, so I'll just read a little bit about comment period. The Brentwood Board of Education has established a public comment period during each regular board business meeting. So we will have that now. During the public comment period, any person may address the board. At each meeting, the board reserves up to thirty minutes. On the agenda for public comment, individuals will be given a three-minute comment period. If more than ten individuals sign up to speak, the board president will reduce the time for the comment period, so it lasts thirty minutes. Those who wish to speak are requested to sign in prior to the start of the board meeting and to provide their contact information. The board does not respond to public comments during the meeting. At the board's discretion, the board superintendent or administrative staff will provide a response within a reasonable period of time. Due to privacy laws protecting students and employees, the public comment session during board meetings is not the appropriate form for addressing individually identified students or personnel matters. Members of the community are encouraged to utilize established policies and procedures for addressing concerns and complaints. Speakers will be interrupted if they discuss matters that might violate board rules and policies. Speakers should be mindful that meetings of the board are broadcast and are reasonable, and they are responsible for their comments. Any citizens wishing to address comments or questions to the board may do so during this portion of the meeting. After rule, call only members of the board administrators and the district's legal counsel and those persons scheduled on the agenda will be permitted to participate. Members of the public submit written statements. It can be read at the board meetings, and the statements must comply with the same time and content limitations imposed on live public comments. So we are now in the scheduled time of our agenda for public comments. The Board of Education wishes to hear your thoughts and concerns. All speakers must have signed in with their address and contact information, and they may speak for up to three minutes. We can ask clarifying questions, but we are not able to respond directly to any questions or comments that are made this evening. The president shall have the authority to request that the superintendent ensure that the appropriate staff member follow up with the individual regarding the information or concern presented during the public comment. So our first person is Brady Hanson.
Good evening. My name is Brady Hanson. I go here to Brentwood High School. I'm a junior, a member of the tennis team, I'm in National Honor Society, student council, involved in various amount of clubs. I'm here to talk about the tennis team. It has come to the attention of the tennis team and I that St. Louis County is redoing the tennis court at Tillis Park. Although this sounds wonderful for the team, it could be a death sentence. The Parks Department has decided to add six pickleball courts, but sadly at the cost of two of our previous four tennis courts. This two courts is not simply enough for our team. I've been with the team since freshman year. I played for two years, and I can't keep, I plan to keep playing for the next two years of high school. It's a wonderful experience. I met so many cool people, upperclassmen, lowerclassmen. It's a really cool experience. We have two wonderful, great coaches sitting behind us. And it's a really awesome experience, and everyone does it. It's one of the biggest teams here at Brentwood. I can, I always try to get people to join the team. It's a fun experience. Even if you don't know how to play tennis, I walked in here not playing tennis at all, and I learned from the start, and they all helped me. And I made varsity in the past, so it's been fun. At a minimum, three-fourths of the team walks or rides their bike to practice. Others ride bikes, oh, sorry, others grab rides with one or two people who have a car, and others ride or walk their bikes to practice at Tillis. With the lack of space, we will need to find two, we need to find locations for not only practices, but games as well. Tillis is eight mile, sorry, point eight miles from the high school. The next closest park with the four courts that we need would be at Shaw or Oakwood Park. Both of those are two miles away. This will make it difficult for those who walk or ride their bikes to practice. Both of those places are across major thoroughfares and can be very dangerous for people riding their bikes or walking to get to these courts. At the same time, we do not have enough people, we will not have enough people on the team who can drive to transport these people to these practices and games. This being said, we've had troubles in the past finding buses for soccer and tennis, and usually they're late or not on time, or we have troubles with the buses. So it will be stressful trying to get to practice every single day to have this team. We would like to ask for four tennis courts to be built at McGrath Elementary School. These courts will be multipurpose pickleball, these, sorry, these courts could be multipurpose. You can have pickleball courts, basketball courts, you can paint pickleball courts over these courts. This will be great for students here at McGrath. They can use these courts to practice in their PD class and stuff. This will provide more opportunity to that school to do more programs. They could even have their own tennis team if they want. It will help promote people to join the tennis team at Brentwood, once they have this opportunity through their own school. You can also put basketball courts. All we are asking for is four courts. And especially having these courts so close to school will make it great for all the students who leave school and go directly to practice. I'd like to thank you for your time, and I hope you consider a resolution to this imminent problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Heinrich.
Hi, I'm Jeff Heinrich. I'm the coach at Brentwood High School. Been teaching here for twenty years, and just want to say that, right, the main thing I think we're really concerned about is the ability of students to get to the tennis courts and play. We definitely don't want them riding their bikes down any of the busy thoroughfares and that, worried about their own safety and that, and just the abilities for us to have a continued team where the students can have home matches and not to play every match as an away match. I think that it's just an opportunity to at least look at the feasibility of what we're doing with that space over McGrath. And like Brady said, it can be a multipurpose area. They can even put a galvanized sleeve directly into the ground where it has a cap, just like they do on the volleyball courts in the gymnasium, where if you don't want to leave the poles up all year long, it can be just put up during the two to two and a half months that we use, and then the pole comes out, and you put it back in, put the caps on, can dry over and play kickball, do whatever the students do during their normal recess out there, and they wouldn't be in the way and that. But like we said before, I think it could be an advantage, you know, if we're already paving an area and we already have an area that we're going to use for playground space and that. Painting on some lines and putting a few poles in may not be that difficult at all, and then it may continue to add to our school district and what we offer to the community. When the school year is out, if you don't want the courts up there all year round, the school year is out, put the poles back up, allow people in the community to play pickleball and add to what we already offer to all the residents in the, in the community and what they can use and that. So we'd like you guys to at least, you know, take a look at it and see what we can possibly do to alleviate the problem. As far as tennis goes, we've been one of the most consistent programs in our school district. We've averaged nineteen to twenty students, as high as twenty-three students each year. So we're one of the largest sports programs we have in the district. So it's not like we're a small program and we don't get turnout. We have twenty kids virtually every year that play and that. So, you know, it's a program that is participating highly with our district and that. So thanks for your time. Appreciate you listening to us.
Where else are, where else are there tennis courts in Brentwood? There aren't there?
There's other courts that we can play, you mean?
Well, where, how many, where are there courts in Brentwood? And I guess probably not places that you can play at.
The only courts that we have, we used to have two tennis courts over there at the Adelsa Court, and those were converted to volleyball courts and that thing volleyball and the basketball. We have two courts over there in Brentwood Forest, but we've even talked to them before about using that and running that, and they gave us a note on that before. We have one court over at the Swim Club and that, but the other court over there is pickleball and that. So within the Brentwood area, we were hoping they were just going to build some tennis courts possibly in that new park area over by where the playground was in the riverside area, but nothing got built over there. And so we're kind of in a bind of if we're going to continue the program, what we can do with it without putting in some type of courts that we can use for ourselves, so.
When is this happening, like before your tennis season this year?
What is the completion?
Yeah, it's already going on over there.
When will it be completed? Will there be any completed by the start of your season?
They say that those will be done by, you know, we start at the end of February. They will likely be completed by February.
And it's two courts instead of four.
Right.
Could you do a JV at one place and a varsity at another, practice-wise?
Possibly, but part of the problem is, I'm the head coach and I'm here at school, so I get off at the normal time and that. And so that means in order for the assistant coach, the assistant coach gets here later just because having to teach at another school and travel time. So that means one of the two levels would have to delay the start. And anytime you start practice at four o'clock, it makes it difficult to keep to then come back to a sport. So it's just never usually a good thing if we were both here and you both leave at the same time. Maybe you could do it that way, but it would be difficult just to split them up.
Thank you for sharing this information. Okay, that brings us to spotlight on Brentwood.
We're going to have Tony Dobson come on down and do our very first spotlight on Brentwood as we start our business meetings. It's the bottom one. Not that bottom.
Here?
No, the next, to the right, to the right of that one.
Here?
Yeah. So just a reminder, this is, we have discerned business board meetings in ways celebrating things that are going on in Brentwood.
I love it.
Why we are here.
Thanks, everyone. It's my pleasure to give you a few highlights. This is something new that we started, just a way to highlight things in our district that's happening, to shine a spotlight on all of our students, our staff, things that our families are doing, and trying to connect it to our new strategic plan and our four priorities. So the first one we have tonight is student success. And I've got a cool story for you guys. A 2024 graduate of Brentwood High School, Trent Mitchell. This summer, he attended a St. Louis Heavy Metal Camp, so like a HVAC and mechanical type thing. Went through a camp and was offered and accepted a contract with Murphy Company. It's like a nationally known designing and engineering and mechanical systems firm. So he was able to take a, take a employment opportunity with them. This is the second year in a row that we've had a student go through this camp and earn an employment opportunity. Last year, it was Nick Phillips. So just a great thing when we're talking about pathways and individualized learning and things like that. This is a great example of things that we can specialize in to put kids on the path that is best for them. So, you know, he's already, he's already in the industry, he's already earning money. When the opportunities or the waitlist to get into industries and things like that are two, three, or four hundred kids or professionals long, so he's already ahead of the curve from everybody, so it's a, it's a good story. Another one, and this is, and this is great because it's the first week of school, and it feels like, it feels like a month ago, but it was only yesterday. You know, when we talk about building school culture, the first day of school is fantastic. Kids come back, there was tons of smiles, the energy was just infectious. It was, it was wonderful. I started my day at Mark Twain. This is a picture of kids coming in, a great example of, you know, just building positive school culture, but also seeing that unified community engagement and seeing our parent groups kind of organized together. So all of that, all of those balloons and things like that was organized by the parent group to have, so that when kids got to school on the first day, they kind of had, you know, a big grandiose type welcome. So lots of smiles, lots of high fives and hugs, and I know after that, I went over to McGrath, had a pep rally in the morning, so it was just really fun to see everybody back and to have that kind of, you know, that welcoming, that positive, that nurturing, kind, caring atmosphere to have people back. And then speaking on unified community engagement, this first one here, we were, when Dr. Zelinski came aboard, we were trying to figure out how we can do a back-to-school kickoff celebration and bring everybody together and celebrate a brand-new school year. And, you know, we put our program together that Monday morning, but we wanted to do something for when those staff all come up that first day and walk up that, probably it seems like for them, that long walk back into work after that summer break, to give them some, some spirits and motivations, you know, some love and support and things like that. And just had an idea to reach out to our parent groups and, you know, ask them would they be willing to come up and write some messages and chalk and things like that. And we didn't know, but apparently this is already a thing. It's called chalking the walk, so.
The way I asked them, did not involve chalk walk, I did not know that was a thing. They knew exactly, they knew exactly what we were talking about.
They knew exactly what we were talking about, and they were right on it. Dr. Zelinski was up there with her two boys. I was up there putting T-shirts and things out for afterwards, but just a great opportunity for all the different parent groups, representatives, their kids, things like that. It was just really a good thing. And it was supposed to rain that morning of our program, but the rain held off, so it didn't, it didn't wash away. So when all of our staff came back, they were greeted right there at the front door with lots of positive messages and energy and things like that.
And it did rain later, which cleared off the water.
Yeah.
Sorry, because it didn't have to rain, so it was really worked up with it.
Our next one was our back-to-school barbecue that we had last Thursday. Once again, it seems like forever ago, but it was not even a week ago. It's a great picture of Debbie Wiltmer and Isabella Soriano. You know, just to, just to see people back and to have people back and to, and to see those interactions and to see those relationships and to rekindle those connections between people is just really great to see. We had a fantastic turnout. Once again, we were worried about the rain. It was supposed to be isolated thunderstorms between four and six, which was basically our window. It was just below fifty percent, so we pushed it and went ahead with it. We were fine. It did get hot, but it was a great event, a really good turnout. We learned a lot for what we can do to improve on it next year, to make it an even bigger thing and to tie it in with our meet-the-teacher nights for the different schools and things like that. But just another great community-type event. And then last but not least, you can't, you can't forget about this. It's our, our Mark Twain Community Open House and Ribbon Cutting Ceremony that we had on Saturday. Just a phenomenal atmosphere, lots of positivity, lots of support, lots of representatives from the community. Had great turnout from the city of Brentwood, representatives from the Board of Aldermen, from the administration office, from Planning and Development, you see our first responders there. So all of those people that helped us get to where we needed to be with this project, our district representatives, members of the design and build team from HCK and Navigate and ICS. Just a really great opportunity to, to kind of put the finishing, even though they're putting still the finishing touches on some things as we speak and as we, as we go forward in the school year, just a great way to, to kick it off and to have a good turnout and have people come through. Lots of big eyes, you know, open mouths, wows, things like that. So I think people were really impressed with it, and it just shows that, you know, together, that kind of community support is what we need and, you know, will keep us successful as we move forward into the school year. So these are fun.
This is awesome.
Great stuff, yeah.
So anybody have any questions?
No, I love that this is a new tradition for our meetings. Great, Kate, if we could have roll call, please.
Mark Cicero.
Here.
Brian Dobson.
Here.
Brian Flynn.
Here.
Keith Ravenberg.
Here.
Katie Spall.
Here.
Lindsay Spencer.
Here.
Terry Trossell.
Here.
Great, thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. If I could have a motion to adjourn, or to, not to, not to adjourn, to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as outlined.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Any opposed? That is approved, and that moves us into our superintendent's report.
Wonderful. Well, first up, we have our final construction update. It is actually Cory will be doing our final construction update instead of Matt. Let us know where we stand with property projects.
All right, let's go. Again, HCK, I'd say this is my first time doing a presentation in this boardroom. And this is the room that I kind of started my journey with you guys back in 2019. So this is fun to come back here and actually see this building being used. And by Mark Twain and the McGrath on my way here, it's pretty exciting to see this experience. Probably, I just wanted you to make it known. Thank you very much. This is our updating on Prop E. We're going to go through the Mark Twain renovations, the days, and then the final days of McGrath demo and the site work associated with it. Of course, it's on the board behind all of you.
We did have a good deal, so we're good, thanks.
Nice picture of the beginning of Mark Twain there, just kind of give you where we are on this schedule. We all know we did have the ribbon cutting this past Saturday, the actual stage completion. As Tony alluded to, there are some conscious items that are being worked on while school is in session and working through those items. They'll be followed with an eleven-month loyalty walk next July. We'll do a kind of a final third, third things to do. That job was a tough one, fourteen months, not just a light renovation, fourteen months either, a major addition, taking out the heart of that building, we're doing a lot of major MVP inside the building. So fourteen months is a tough schedule. I see we got to where we are now, and you guys should be very proud of that building. All right, here's your new storm shelter slash library, first floor when you walk in there. This is part of that major addition, and that space feels very welcome and inviting. It's nice to go and walk in that building, have that big grand opening now and walk straight into this space as well. This, I think everybody probably loves as much as I do, but seeing that old facade and seeing the old Mark Twain up there on the high part of the ceilings, and I think HCK did a great job of kind of highlighting that and maintaining some of those arch window openings and really giving it that historic feel. The new updated cafeteria with a building for the kids to clean up right where they're eating. Kind of give everybody that nice area with a brand-new, fully renovated kitchen behind it. The gymnasium, this one, I love the fact that this was a potential that wouldn't happen at all. So we're able to get decent numbers and get this alternate and really redo that old gymnasium and you guys put the money and effort into it, so it turned out really well. I want to feel positive at the end of the job, that's one of the things we need to accomplish, it looks good now. This doesn't say a whole lot, but at the restroom upstairs, what needs to be realized here is this isn't just an aesthetic upgrade. This is going through a tearing of plumbing out, tearing the drains out. This is a major MVP upgrade, really kind of set you guys up for reduced maintenance in the future. Really bring that building up to date, so that was a big goal piece. And that was actually also an alternate as well that we were able to bring into the project. And actually, at the other house, one of the colleagues that I heard, I think the great girl, she said one of the things that I was, she was most excited about was the gymnasium. I think you got to feel for those kids, because they went from this school to the whole McGrath and now they can come back. So they're, they're going to be extremely excited. Just a nice ribbon cutting photo. I had not seen that aerial photo before Tony showed it, and I liked that view as well. McGrath Phase Two, the demo and the site work, I'm sure everybody's been driving by and taken a look at it. They were supposed to be done with demolition this week, a hundred percent. They've got a great job on that already. It looks like the building's out. They did get the temporary rock turnaround in for the parents that come in to do the airdrop off at the school. We are going to start the earthwork and as long as there's no major site changes, continue to move forward. We are expecting the GC to be done in October, and then we'll release the playground contractor in November to do the Early Childhood Center playground that was attached to the Early Childhood Center portion of the new McGrath. So I'm just going to recap to you guys real quick on just kind of the scope of Phase Two. So everything you see there on the screen to the left of that kind of purple block, which is the new McGrath school. So everything to the left there is going to be in the Space Two scope. We've got a new kind of asphalt playground that's going to come down from the north through the center there. So that's going to be areas for kids to play basketball, foursquare. I think there's a favorite one called baki ball or something along those lines. So that'll be a space for those kind of recess activities to happen. As you work your way further south from that, there is a new learning garden that will be on the west side of the elementary wing. So that old pavilion that was kind of located on the north side of the playground, that is getting reinstalled in that location. There's some plantings and some trees in that area with a little rock path that kind of circulates throughout there. Also, on the west side of that building, there's water and electricity, serve any sort of kind of activities that might happen within that learning garden space. And as we work our way to the west side of the sites, that first green block, that's going to be the main playfield for the playground. So that is about six, seven feet up from that lower asphalt playground. That playfield is fenced in with the rest of the playgrounds, fenced in from the parking lots and the drive.
lots and the drive. And then as we work our way to the left even further, there's a smaller green block and that is another kind of open field right now. This is not inside the fenced-in area, so this area could serve as kind of a playfield for any sort of like field day or other kind of extra activities that may happen within the sites. And then most importantly with this, we have a new drive that wraps in from St. Clair on the west along the north sides to allow for expanded and larger length of cubic per pickup, drop-off, pickup.
I know, I've already mentioned it, but please note that the center of that land on that purple block that says pavilion is you're about to see an image. It's got to show them in a different spot before it happens. That is a fine mark right there.
I, I noticed that.
It's going to be on your tip.
So yeah, this here is an aerial image, so we have to complete these learnings that you'll see back when we did Phase One of McGrath. Shortly before our project out to bed, we had some additional user group meetings and there was a request to move that pavilion closer to the buildings. That way it's closer to the school, it's more supervisable with the security system, the cameras, and that learning garden is kind of close, is closer to the building, just right outside the classroom. So that little block that you see on the very far side, that's actually relocated down to the asphalt playground that we kind of tucked away on that north side of the building. This here is a shot kind of over by the dumpsters, looking towards the early childhood center entry. That area right in front of it is the playground, so we don't have any play equipment shown, but that is a spot where the play equipment is, that will be installed in November, November will be located. So that there is a soft playground and then just to the left of that are those existing bike racks next to that. On that drive, you see that goes out to the asphalt playground. That also serves as a fire truck turnaround and fire lane in the events of the fire trucks needing to get back there. That's a access route that will get back there for them.
So just offhand, because I'm thinking about it, could tennis courts potentially fit there, but then they couldn't hold a fire truck?
So there are some complications depending on the degree of tennis courts. Some of you guys would want higher grade, kind of more professional style, like you use for like a high school level. You have to have a pretty flat slope for those. And this playground does slope a little bit, just to allow for drainage. So there are some concerns with that, so we can certainly look at it. There's another spot kind of up at the top of the hill that's kind of undeveloped, that kind of last open green field. There's a potential for there as well, but we would have to grade that up higher to flatten that out to serve that. But that's definitely something I could look at if it were his interest.
I, I would recommend if you are going to tennis courts, there's a potential, always asphalt, because of the concrete, maybe it's sort of senior stuff on that.
So we had talked about where the fire trucks are supposed to go in, having some of those pillars that either come up or come down automatically. Do you remember what the, I don't know. Yeah. Is that still being put in there? There's not, those renderings, but it was talked about after these renderings. And then the fences, is that part of, when you're saying that the, where exactly, what do you call it, the, the yard work or the, the work of the, the earthwork? Are the fences that we had talked about and the height and all that, is that part of the earthwork that's going to be immediately following the demo?
It is, yeah. So they'll, they'll go up, yeah, once they grade everything out, they'll install the fences, probably around the same time they do, or shortly before they, you know, see, see those areas or something actually. So yeah, and right there in the fire truck entry, there is actually a vehicular grid there, so it will be kind of the standard swing gate, so that'll actually secure that area off from that parking area.
And where is the fence? Your pointer.
I'm just going to have the laser and chop this through.
I can see it.
Is it right here?
There's, yes.
Is that it right there?
I guess.
Oh, you're right. It disappears in the swing.
Yes, it's a black line.
So yeah, that, that playground is fully fenced out.
So tight to the field.
So we should, we should tie into this fence here, right?
Correct.
And this is our, our swing gate for vehicular and it'll be up here going down and it ties back into the fence here.
Hit the arrow again on the left, lower left.
And so why did we decide to not fence in the, the other U eight soccer field?
From a supervision standpoint, so since that upper field is, I think it's, I think it's, it might be around almost twenty feet from that asphalt playground. So just from a supervision standpoint, it would be extremely difficult for staff to be able to monitor, monitor that upper field. With that kind of intermediate field, you can still get pretty good access based on kind of staffing. Teachers would be kind of posted out there at the soccer field, that maybe larger one. But once you get up to that higher, then you start to have issues with kind of staff supervision, being able to kind of supervise everything that's going on on the playground.
I don't think it's going to be used as much more.
It wasn't used as much during school. That was more for the Y's, the, the relationship that we have with the Y. So they were more worried about where they were going to focus on the kids being versus that.
Okay. It's also a slow break as the.
Yeah, I understand that. Yeah.
I mean, ideally, a fence would be great around all of it because it's going to be close to roads and things like that.
Correct.
So you're going to have to have definitely supervision.
A secondary fence so that it's not always accessible unless a teacher says it can be, but if there's no fence, then it will never be accessible.
Right.
That's short-sighted.
And how, how tall is this fence? Is it the four-foot fence like it is in the front of McGrath or are we talking six to?
Yes, seven.
Okay.
So I'd have to go back and look, but yeah, I'm pretty sure it is a four-foot fence.
Okay.
We went round and round and round on that many times and two fences, one fence and whatever, and so I think this was the compromise, you know, because there was no fence at all in the beginning.
And I'm curious, you mentioned sod, so how are we going to continue to maintain and water the fields? Is there a sprinkler system?
It is. It's irrigated as well. So sod and irrigation was an alternate for the project when we put it out to bed and prices on that also came in extremely well, so.
Okay.
Get that included.
So that include both of the fields then? The irrigation and the sprinkler system?
Correct.
Okay. So if we did, okay, just thinking about what we, what I've learned today as well, there could be, if that doesn't get irrigation and water, there could be some cost savings there as well, potentially. Okay.
And if I can add real quick, back on the tennis court question, you really don't want fire trucks coming in and turning around on that.
Yeah.
It'll destroy the courts pretty quickly.
Just some pictures of the demolition, kind of off the hill, looking up at the old building and then looking up from the old parking lot back down towards the new McGrath. And then that was that temporary turnaround for parents for the suit drop-offs that people actually come up there and turn the vehicle around. This is what I wanted to revisit on these two slides here. So this is where we are on the budget. Total scopes is thirty-six point zero nine five million. I'm sure that is the total budget we were given just a little later ago, or in just a second. But please note on the Mark Twain column on the right, McGrath Phase Two column on the right, second bar, owner contingency, we are still holding on to a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of contingency on Mark Twain and a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars of contingency at McGrath Phase Two. That's not currently earmarked for something. So there's some additional funds there. And if you carry that thirty-six point zero nine five million to this next one, we were given a total owner budget of thirty-six million, two hundred and eleven, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Another hundred and sixteen thousand dollars under budget there. So you have a hundred and sixteen, a hundred and thirteen, a hundred and twenty-one. I'd feel more comfortable if we have an asterisk next to the one twenty-one because there's some risk for other same conditions. If we get in there and find some, something buried under the old McGrath, there's some adjectives we need to address. So that's part of the reason I'm only sitting there, but there is some additional funds. We could look at, if that is a true one of the board, we could look at some potential potential layouts and those messes together and see if it fits in that budget without asking for additional funds.
So I was going to ask another question. You guys have done a lot of these projects and, you know, kind of fencing it off, just keeping part of the field for the elementary school, the other part of the field feels more like it's for the rest of the community. Have you ever seen where the city would potentially share some of that cost to develop that particular part of the land? I mean, if it's not.
I'll put it in this, I'll just ask you. I go to communities like yours, property costs for your districts have been very minimal, which has been great. I work at Arnold School District in Fox where it's hundreds of thousands of dollars every job. So there's a stark contrast from communities to districts and how they, how they get along for one another.
Sure.
You guys live in a community that supports your district quite deeply.
Right.
I, I think knowing that is always worth having the conversation.
Yeah.
Years ago, the city helped with the cost of the McGrath playground. Like the PTO came up with X amount and then they did X amount. You know, who knows what those conversations would be, you know, and also, you know, the reason we were looking at those two fields being put back there is because we had a relationship with the Y and they use those exclusively for their soccer practices and their games. And so, you know, that, that's also, you know, something to look at.
Right, yeah.
And it's also something we need to consider when, not that the idea of the tennis isn't, isn't a great idea, don't get me wrong, but we got to be careful because we had taxpayers who we told we were doing X, Y, and Z and we had a company that we were telling, we will have the fields back at a certain time as well. So, you know, we can't really, you know, jump on something like this right away. We really would have to look at a lot of things.
Right, yeah. And the city has an amount, that Mount Calvary Park as well, still ready to be developed at some point. And that's just up the road and I don't know what that is earmarked for, but that could be another potential.
What if you guys looked at, trying to follow your train of thought there, adding another fence line here, but the big large open gate that gets opened during recess and then closed, and this gets opened during the evenings, so the public has access to this field and not to the rest of your facilities? And then you could, instead of sacrificing that whole field, look at a potential option there. That way you can give back to the community a larger field and keep them from being at risk with the district from using the playground, the stuff that puts you guys at significant risk having the community there every day.
I think the community.
Lock it up, yeah.
The YMCA, both, historically the YMCA, like you're thinking.
Well, we only had one field. We never had one with a little. We never had, we just had one set field because there was only one other field over at the Brentwood Park.
Okay.
And.
And at Mark Twain.
There was a lot of flooding. So those fields are not really, you know, dependable. I know they practice at Mark Twain, but I don't think they ever had games. Did they have games at Mark Twain?
YMCA?
Field hockey.
Field hockey, yeah, but not soccer.
And they did football for middle school as well there.
How big is that smaller soccer field? Would it, would it even accommodate a tennis court?
I'd have to go back and take a look at it. I think it should be able to accommodate a minimum one, possibly two. I'd have to kind of take a look at how things lay out on the sides. I'm also grading wise, there is a little bit of grade there, so like the soccer field can kind of drain naturally. With tennis courts, you have to have those near flats, so there'd be a little bit of grading and that may kind of come into play, how many could fit out there. But I think I think I can take a look at that.
You, you mentioned the fence and kind of locking that. Is that what you've seen in other district as well? As well they lock down?
Yeah, because you have a bull come into your playground in there and you're getting the kid regular arm and it's on your property. And that's why I seen that. If you know the district, they try to lock it down and keep the community out for that reason.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we have plans to do that.
We've never done that. We haven't had that. And we've never, they sue us.
But it's not the state, it's, it's, you know, like, whistle over to the public. So they just find this district on their basis. Yeah, that's, that's what we see too. There is total down that part of the district, some are more than others, so.
Yeah, because I think the fence pitched originally, my understanding was to keep the kind of kids corralled in and keep people for safety, coming in and grabbing a kid and leaving or a car.
Or kid running out, yes.
Right, right.
And we wanted to return the grounds and the building back to the way it was before, like their kids were locked in before and so, you know, did not have that.
Yeah.
On the Mark Twain, so can you share a little bit about like what kind of punch list items are incomplete and then what kind of final change order negotiations you see? Are there dollar change orders and are they pluses or minuses or?
And we do have those in our, in the numbers you saw. They're already projected and they're working against the risk is. We are going through and working through those with a kind of trajectory currently. For the, the punches items, it's really a lot of doors and it's really slable. Those are the big items right now. Is there something I'm missing that?
Yeah, just kind of some miscellaneous things here and there. ICS has actually done a really good job on getting that completed before school. So I actually got punched Thursday before school opened. And prior to that, I think I had around eighteen hundred different punch items, so we just like touched paint here and there and there was probably a couple hundred of those at least. And as of Thursday, I think I marked off probably close to eighty percent of those and there were actually additional ones that were completed, but with the kind of the app that we were using, I couldn't quite close those out yet just because they had told me, but I had seen that they already done that work. So altogether, there's probably about five percent left. Some of those are just items that they're, they're waiting on, items still, like I think there's a tack board running around that we're still waiting on. But overall, they, they've done a really good job on getting that out, close that.
And you were saying on the, the budget update where you had the, the asterisk for the risk of unforeseen conditions. So even though we have a hundred and thirteen thousand and some at Mark Twain and we have a hundred and twenty-one, five thirty-five, like that really needs to not be touched until we know for sure and everything is done in the Phase Two of, of McGrath because there could be some potential.
Yes.
And we could need to maybe take some from Mark Twain and put, you know, we would be able to take some from Mark Twain like we did when we didn't need some at McGrath and we gave it to Mark Twain for any unforeseen situations.
Yeah, and I think the biggest issue right now is McGrath.
You know, so they want to make sure there's not something buried in or out of there.
Yep.
So pass that, we're just doing like the final scene, the visiting, the curving, the paving. And that will be another part of the paving, make sure that some of these could be, but I think you're correct, we need to secure that funds. I'd be a little hesitant to say yes, eight, but three thousand dollars in the test works anyway.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I have one more question going back to the pavilion, just because I like the image that has the pavilion between the fields, not that we need it now, but I would love for there to be potential to have a pavilion there in the future. So I want to, one more. Because I think it would be really, shade is so valuable and I know that in the past the PTOs have built and paid for pavilions, but having just land that's flat enough to accommodate would be something that I would love to be considered when you're grading.
That is the PTO pavilion. So is it going here?
It's going down by the.
Right, so down by there, which is where they used to do a lot of the fall festivals and stuff off of that playground. And so in all of this, that's being put back, electric is being run. Is that something you guys are doing or then is the district then stepping in and putting that back in? The pavilion, the electric and the structure?
We'll do a great sound and you can check the electrical panels.
Correct, yeah, that's all on the current contracts for students, so that's all included on that. So yeah, with that pavilion, there's new security lighting for that. The water and electrical that's on the building, that's actually already there. We had pre-planned that out since Phase One, so.
And are you able to recycle the stuff that was there? So we've, we've taken that down, we've stored it and we're putting the exact same pavilion back up?
Correct, yes.
But couldn't we leave space for potential repeat in the future?
We'd, we'd see if they can just bring a level of sponsorship.
And then the outdoor classroom, do we have any idea what's going back into there? And then the outdoor classroom, um, do we have any idea what's going back into there? Like, there was benches, like rows of benches, and there was some kind of flower stuff and whatever. Just curious if we have any idea of what we're doing.
So, yeah, we've we've got some new trees that are going in down in that lower area. There's some ground cover. I forget exactly the type of plants they are. I think it's pretty similar to what's out front by the lineman sign. Um, we've got that kind of going in as a border on the west side. On the south side, there is a retaining wall. Um, and there's a kind of stonewalkway that kind of meanders through that area. As far as the seed goes, I think there's some table, some inches. Um, tables that were salvaged from the pavilion that are being reinstalled within that pavilion area. So previously, there was the pavilion on the playground. Um, that's kind of the north side, and there was the one on the south. So we're kind of meshing those two together now in that that lower south side there.
One other thought that I just want to throw out there since your attention is here. And that is, that playground is wonderful. It is also the hottest hot box, like, in the whole world. It just traps and holds the heat. And I don't know if it would be possible to, I would be curious to know how we could accommodate with, like, anchors on the building and stringing shade structures across. It would drop the temperature by fifteen, twenty degrees. I mean, it is so, so warm. And the kids don't like to get on the equipment because it's so hot, and they're hiding along the walls because you only, because of where the sun travels, it's just right along one wall, so.
I think that's more of a PTO thing, like, we've done that in the past, gotten those after the fact versus a district thing.
Rolling into the building. I mean, we could pay for the shades, but if they had the idea of how to anchor them.
You're talking about the soft, not the E C C layer, but care layer.
Yes.
Yeah.
The only thing to look at is, is it was a miracle, but direction's immigration never right. A lot of times, they have shade structures that maybe will attach onto their equipment. And they can see you have the maker voice on the building, maker voice on their equipment.
Oh, that's great.
And sheriff's balls and then the fabric.
Okay. So that would be something we would have our PTOs look at.
It wasn't really expensive.
Yeah, we would look at those facilities.
It is ongoing. Once the situation.
And so I'll ask a question just, I don't know if we talked about this before, but knowing that there is a slope going down, we're really confident that flooding is not going to be an issue.
Correct.
I could ask that over and over again.
You have to really get the attention to put it under that building.
Yeah.
There is sixty inch, five foot tall pipes.
Yeah.
That's thrown all over. That actually, I mean, all the playgrounds off late, you've got a lot of underground attention that's not there.
Okay, good. I get asked, that question gets asked quite a bit, so.
Even even the sub the lower soccer field won't be in jeopardy because of the higher soccer field? So all that drainage is under the second?
Correct, so in between those two soccer fields, we do have a drainage area that's in between that. So anything that flows from that westernmost soccer field that's up higher would flow down into that one. Part of that middle soccer field does drain towards Zass. Um, there's some water on that that actually sheds up towards the north, towards the parking lot. And there's more drainage structures along the north than anything that's kind of on that west or eastern side of that soccer field. Um, that does go down the hillside there, but we have some drainage areas, I believe, along the western side of that asphalt drive and eastern side of that hill to pick up any of that drainage. And then that asphalt playground also slopes down kind of back towards the west, towards that soccer field.
Oh, so it's, is it crowned? Sorry, is the field crowned then? Is that what I'm hearing?
It is, yeah.
Oh, okay.
There's, uh, it's still a little different. Normally, your crown would go right down the center.
Yeah.
Trying to remember right, kind of has a, you started forty-nine, you moved down to forty-five, six, across that.
Okay.
Okay. It's not a crown, it's a diagonal slope.
Okay, so, yeah.
But that's, I mean, it's it's shedding the water, it's not pooling the water up. And that was a big concern at the previous McGrath, that just flowing the water in the middle.
From that bottom left corner of that dark green to the top right corner is three foot tall.
Okay, perfect.
Which is sounding a lot, but it's not really a lot when you search across the whole.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Just a thought, Andy. You know that area that used to be. Curiously, I'm like, I wonder where she's going. You know where we used to have the wonderful circle drive where the buses came through by the middle school?
Yes.
Is that wide enough for a tennis court?
We could, we could look at that potential. Part of the reason why.
That's a good idea.
This is a very controversial thing, why we got rid of the circle drive.
Yeah.
We didn't make that decision.
We did not.
M S D made that decision for us. So we would also have to calculate the runoff for that.
Yeah, I mean, I I think tennis is really important. I want us to be careful. There was so much said about how so many things, the city was supposed to do, a dog park and this and that, whatever. So I think we need to follow on the same plan. We need to complete the phases that we told the community we were doing. Um, if you think there's any possibility, I think we would like to hear it. But I think we gotta be careful of deviating from what we had said because it's really been a very sore subject in this community. And we we gotta be careful.
Yeah, I would say this is a, yeah, the tennis courts is a brand new conversation that we have not actually, I have not.
We're not forgetting about it.
And thank you for bringing this.
This is good.
This is a good conversation. What I would say is that, to your point, Carrie, I would recommend that we finish up. The point of our presentations tonight is to ground set of what is it that we have left? What we have, what is our five year facilities plan, which Andy will present to us? And then this is where our facilities and operations committee can come in and start having conversations around, well, we have a five year plan of other projects that we still need to work on. What what is feasible, what is a priority? And then how do we move forward with that? And then have that greater conversation with the board. I would tend to agree. I would love to know if it's feasible, but I would not recommend right now making any changes to a project at this point in a project with what has been communicated and shared with other people. Uh, but that's where the facilities and finance, once we've ground set and we know where we are with all of this, then we can have that conversation around what is feasible. So I would love to know if it's feasible to build tennis courts anywhere, but I don't know. I do think this is because, yeah, no decisions made. That would be mine. We are not going to be able to make decisions.
And proceed as your demo and site work and dates are saying.
Yeah, finish the, yeah, finish that part. And then we'll be able to have that conversation of what are the priorities? Once we see the bigger priorities too for the district, and then we have to figure out what is the order with which we can actually tackle those projects.
So last question regarding the demo. Are we going to have, like, with the fences going up, the temporary fences as you're doing some of that site work? Is it going to be like the mesh on the fences to keep the dust away from the playground as the kids are playing? Because this is going to be going on, I'm assuming, during school.
Yeah, so we're not coming. I need to check this to see what type of mesh we have.
Okay.
Call it a specific type. Usually, we try to do four, five, seven. Now, I think we're looking at a public view, I don't know whether we're kind of playing dust on existing player.
Right, I saw the water, you know, you guys had the water during the demo, which is fantastic. Just trying to think, uh, because I did, that was a question that a kindergartner family's asked me, so just want to pass that along.
Yeah, I love that you got that as a free, I don't know that specific detail also.
Yeah, okay, no, fair enough, fair enough.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for all your work. We are so grateful for how.
Yes.
Yeah.
And it is exciting to come full circle. And thank you so much for doing what, yeah.
Yeah, I I live on that street and I drive by there every day, and I'm just kind of, I was amazed at how quickly that network.
Quick and clean.
And I was thinking it would be languishing, but so as long as you don't uncover that Indian bear. It'll be fine.
It's not even that, it's just.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Andrew Hartnett with our five year facilities plan update. Again, I do want to reiterate, first of all, publicly at a board meeting, Andrew Hartnett and his team has done an amazing, 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 amazing. They hit school open, the buildings looked beautiful on top of construction projects the entire time that he has worked here right here.
Yeah.
Um, so we're in a very good space thanks to such a wonderful presentation because of his leadership as well.
Yeah.
I'm, you know, blessed with a wonderful staff. We just really have some strong people in our department. They just get it done, it's awesome. So, one thing I wanted to point out to you guys is, I pointed this out to Tony on Saturday. Each ribbon cutting we've had, unfortunately, we're out of the picture. I have this, like, scowl on my head. I want to make it public that it's not, like, meaningful.
Didn't even notice.
Well, now I'm going to look for it.
It's a word wall, though. We're sweating, so. All right, so. Okay. Okay, so, I'm going to kind of preempt this, uh, you know. When I started in twenty twenty, I was asked about a month into my job to come up with a binder. Which is not ideal. So I I kind of did the best I could with the information we had. We had a lot of unknowns. We had, we didn't quite know exactly what was going to happen with Mark Twain. We didn't even know, you know, the funding would be passed. So we weren't quite sure what was going to happen, so we kind of, just had a place of bludgeons. So as the years have gone by, we've gotten kind of a tighter grip on what's going on. You know, the high school project was finished and all that good stuff. So we now have a much better idea of what we're looking at as far as things are concerned. Unfortunately, prices have escalated quite a bit, so a lot of those original numbers that some of you may have seen are quite different now. So, um, another thing to to note is that, you know, items that you're going to see that are placed in a year by year category, you know, sometimes something they come up and we can't do that year, we may have to kick down the road, or we may have to do something sooner than than we originally planned. But this is just kind of general guidance. And I am thrilled that we are having a finance and facilities committee because there's nothing worse than having all the pressure on me to make all these decisions, so. I I love other people's input. Okay, so, um, we're going to start off with projects that we completed this year. We really had quite a summer. Here we go. Okay, so this is a twenty-three, twenty-four capital project list that we accomplished. Let's see, we had the Brentwood High School gutters invasion project is something that I've really been wanting to do for some time. I, it was on our list to do a couple of years ago. We didn't quite get to it, but that didn't mean we weren't working on it. We did a few test areas over a couple of summers just to look at what we were getting into. You know, we wanted to, you know, make sure we weren't, like, peeling an onion as far as, you know, getting getting way over our heads. You know, we saw the condition of what the gutters invasion would look like. We saw what it looked like on the surface, and it was scary enough to me to where I was worried about what would come behind it. Luckily, things were pretty solid, so we got away pretty good. So, um, we had an original estimate to to finish the soft invasion project for two hundred thousand dollars. We actually finished it at a hundred and twenty-five thousand. It was, and it was an amazing project. We dealt with a wonderful contractor. They were communicative, they were respectful. I mean, they were, they were customer service oriented, worried about us, not that it was a great, great thing. So I can't say enough good things about Missouri Builders. The B H S B N S auditorium H B A C. So that had been on our five year facilities rotation. And then we had a flood, and it destroyed those units. And we're still, we were still able to run them, but we weren't able to run, we had to run them manually. So we were able to get an insurance claim out of that, and we paid all this money to have those replaced. So, um, that did not come out of our capital funding, except for maybe a thousand dollars. So, but that was a almost two hundred thousand dollar project. Complete and wonderful. So, I know that's something we've been looking to do for a while. Something that kind of popped up was not intended to be on our capital improvement project, but this city of Brentwood and St. Louis County made it be one of our projects is that we, our cooling towers were slightly above the decibel range that's acceptable. So we had to spend some funds there, close to sixty thousand dollars to remediate the sound issues there now. It is not complete yet, but there's a guy on a ladder every morning right now doing it now. So he may be done by the end of the year, not getting that. So, so we waited very long to get the material. In my business, I hear a lot of COVID still, COVID, COVID, COVID. So I've been a little tired of that excuse, but, uh, but we we did finally get that material. But we're hoping that that solves the problem. Now, back in, uh, back in twenty twenty, like I said before, we weren't quite sure what we were dealing with at Mark Twain. We kind of plugged a general number into roofing at Mark Twain. Not quite sure what was going to happen, but we knew we needed something there. So, um, then we did the, uh, the project. So we we went ahead and replaced pretty much all the flat roofing that was not in the project scope. We estimated it at four hundred and twenty-five thousand, but we got out at two hundred and forty-four thousand. And that is now. Now, with that flat roofing, there was a lot of unforeseens. We weren't quite sure. It's one, it's another one of those things, it's like, until you get into it, you know, you don't really know. So we had a lot of decking issues. The decking was not thick enough, uh, was not acceptable. It was acceptable in nineteen sixty-eight, but not in twenty-four, uh, things like this. We had a lot of root hairs coming in. We did quite a few last things to that. Now, the final one, twenty-three, twenty-four, which is still in progress, the large gymnasium H B A C units. We had an issue over the winter time where we lost power. And, uh, when the power picked back on and destroyed the boards that control those units, we were able to get one of those units back up and running, which is enough to heat and cool the gym, but scary enough to not depend on it. So we would have ordered those last, uh, last spring. And they are due to be installed in October. The latest update I got from the manufacturer, which were the coolings available, is they are almost out of the supply. And so we could get them sooner, but I'm not promising.
And we've already allocated those dollars.
Yes, yes. Okay, so now we're going to get more projections. And like I said, this isn't always, you know, it's not, things can be moved around, but these are our basic things that we're working on. So for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five year, which is now, we're working on the building C and H B A C replacement. So in the twenty nineteen renovation of the high school, we had an H B A C unit that was the project. And that's actually the one that controls the heating and cooling for this floor. It's about thirty years old. It needs to be replaced. We're having hard time getting parts for it. Where it works, it works wonderfully. It's like one of the best working things on the base here, but it's not working. So.
And how often would you say it doesn't work? Or did it not work last year?
I'd say a couple of times a year we have to go in there and do quite a bit of work to it. And we are always successful, you know, back up and going. It's usually a day, but a day is a long time.
Yeah.
So, um, so anyway, we're, um, in the estimation process of getting that completely, we were under the impression from several vendors that we were going to be able to forego replacing the V A B units that are already in the ceiling, that's control the air, that fills in the air. It turns out that's probably not going to be the case, so it's going to be more invasive than we thought. Now, granted, the pricing will include fixing all the ceilings that get done and all that other stuff. So we're trying to make sure that we can get it done in a summer schedule that's going to be tight. Could. So we're working on that, and we're looking at like a four hundred thousand dollar price for that, just had a baseline. Currently, there is a retaining wall, or lack thereof, on the back of our our athletic, you know, lot at the high school. We want to make sure that we are being good neighbors and that we are also being safe. So we want to make sure we have a retaining wall that's washing the way back there.
This is the west end of the field.
That's the west end. It's not the whole thing, because it's not all, you know, correct, but there's a significant portion of this issue. We're also looking at the shingled roof on this building. The whole roof isn't shingled, just the perimeter is. We're looking at replacing that. It is a roof that. It is a roof that was installed when the building was built in 1969. So we're looking to get that replaced.
And does it make sense to do the roof replacement and the HBAC kind of hand-in-hand?
I think, I think it would be beneficial that we kind of get out of this area.
Yeah.
Then we're looking at the 25-26 year, the historic BHS building, Building B. We're looking to reshingle that roof. That's the front portion of the building. Behind the main portion of the building is all flat roof. That was replaced a few years ago, so it's not very old, so yeah, it's still very shingled. But we wanna reshingle that roof.
How, how long will those, like a new reshingled roof, what is the life expectancy? Just out of curiosity.
Twenty.
How does, how does the Building B group?
We're not exactly sure. I would say it probably won't pass twenty, I would say.
Yeah.
So we're looking at about $100,000 for that, and a lot of architectural reasons about that as well. Also continuing with the 25-26 year, the high school Building B gutter restoration, which should go hand-in-hand with the roofing. We currently have these inlaid copper gutters that are, they're really cool, but they're also really troublesome. They can cause a lot of hot things like that. So we're looking at doing like a restoration, which could be about $50,000. Now, another one, and this is something, it's just something we're thinking about, something we've had this investigation on, wanna see how much the field is getting used and things like that. The Mark Twain field has a lot of rust and things like that, and, you know, a lot of athletic teams like to use our fields, but we don't wanna turn ankles, things like that. It used to be the field hockey field, and it had a very stern grade to it, but since field hockey was no longer played there, it's since kind of gone out of the way side. So again, we're vetting if we need to do our, but it's something we're just kind of putting a placeholder around that.
So have we put a kibosh hold on the crowning of our football field? I know we approved that a couple of years ago. It's used for girls soccer, boys soccer, track and field, and now we've got this relationship with Clayton, and I hear the numbers are getting bigger and bigger at the middle school. Is that, I didn't see that anywhere on this?
It's, it's not out of the question. We have a, we have a vendor that we use to maintain our field, and they top dress it twice a year to keep it draining well. And, you know, I kind of depend on some of their expertise, and they would be the one to, to stay and make a lot of money off re-crowning our field. But so far, they have said that it doesn't necessarily really need it. What, what we've been doing is working the field, making sure that, you know, we're making time through them. The top dressing seems to work, it keeps apparently good. The one issue that we also have with the field is every sport plays on it, and they all practice on it, which is, it's, it's very taxing on that field. So it does require, what will be nice in my opinion is when we get the grab open back up, we might be able to kind of lessen some of the burden on that field and spread out some practices, possibly a grab as well, just to kind of help us out there. It's, it does seem a bit, you know, the crowning's not necessarily on the table, but it's something that we're definitely looking for. Moving on to 2026-27. In the original plans for the high school renovations, there was a proposal to put rooftop units on Building B, which is a historic building. Currently, the only thing that heats and cools that building are large source heat lines. They cool the hallways and the classrooms. It doesn't provide for a lot of dehumidification. It gets hard in the summertime for those units to keep up, especially on really hot So what we are looking at to possibly, maybe some pressure on those units, probably continue to live unless we're a little bit longer, we put an actual rooftop unit system to help heat and cool the hallways, but also dehumidify the spaces. It's great for the finishes, the flooring. We have really hard type of finishing in that, in that area as well. So we're looking at doing that for about $600,000 with architectural engineering, so we have the power to do it, the power was put in during the renovation, but we need the options, so it's something that I would like to do. I think it's a really good level. Mine's really boring, I have a lot of pictures. For 27-28, we'd like to take a look at replacing the rubber ice track around high school. It's holding up okay, it's doing fine, but it's gonna be, probably be, we have had to make a minor repairs as you would to a track like that, and it would freshen it up and make it look good. And we're looking at probably $180,000 for that. It's got some cushion in there, because you don't know what you're gonna find if you tear it up. So, you know, one of the things that we fight with having a grass turf athletic field is grass growing up underneath the track. So my nightmare is we tear it up, but I know this crap, so we're building a little padding.
So what were on the track and the field and all that other stuff? I didn't notice anything about a scoreboard being on here. And to me, that is a huge eyesore. It doesn't light up. If it does, it's very minimal. It's embarrassing to our kids. It's embarrassing when our community sees all these beautiful buildings that they have contributed and helped us build, and you can't see a score. Where, where is that, and I guess why isn't it, in here?
So that's a very, I've actually been talking with our athletics department over the past few months about what we can do to, to help remedy that situation. We've had countless people out to look at that scoreboard to see what issues it is. They're not finding anything. Athletics has had people out, they're not finding anything, so we're trying to figure out what we can do. We talked about replacing it. We wanna talk about replacing it and where the funding would come from for that. Very, very, very expensive. We wanna know where we would put it, state where it is currently, if we would move it anywhere, what type we would put in. We put one in like what we have in the large gym, which is a nice big X for TV basically. Because actually technically, the one in the large gym is made for the outside, it's an outdoor scoreboard. So it's definitely been, you know. To add to our finance and operations committee, you know, so we sit down and bring all sides together and talk about what we need to do there.
Yeah, because a lot of people were told we were crowning the field. Jamie and I went out and told people we were crowning the field, we had, we'd approved it, and then that didn't happen. So we gotta come through on something. You know?
All right, so for the 28-29 year, around the 28-29 years, we start going back and replacing that LBT flooring, Building B, that we put in the year 2020. So we're looking at about $100,000 for that. It's quite a bit of flooring.
It's a lot.
And the flooring that is down there is very difficult to pick up. It's, you know, it's just not ideal. It wasn't ideal to put it in at the first place. We kind of got stuck with it. So we'll definitely look at something that is much more durable, to last a little bit longer. And we may not just do all LBT, you know, there's, there's great walk-off mat carpet that is wonderful, extremely durable, easy to clean, you know, there's a lot of options out there, so. And then for the 2029-2030 year, we're looking at possibly replacing that theme playground that we didn't touch at Mark Twain. So not only would we do that, we'd probably put rubber ice surface in and not just have the, have the mulch. Now, things to keep in mind, I've already said, I probably sound like a broken record, pricing fluctuates frequently, especially post-COVID, it's planned today's price. Other capital items arise and oftentimes become a priority, such as tuck pointing and other general items like that. We did have a tuck pointing item come up this summer, which needed some quick attention. It kind of showed up really quickly, it was a little bit, you know, eye-opening, but yeah, probably did any of it. Was it $80,000 right at it? Yeah, it wasn't. It wasn't terrible, but so we're always doing things like that. So they're just not huge items. We're trying our best to keep the projects within certain years, but, you know, some prior years, we've had a construction, and other factors, our bandwidth has kind of been not there. We're really busy, so we're focused on getting certain things over the finish line. And also, you know, like, Brady's not here anymore, but we're always happy to take suggestions for improvement projects, especially for community staff, especially students, because they're in the center.
Do we have our own contingency kind of kitty of money when we're budgeting for these things, that if something else comes up in them that we can tap into if needed, or do we not?
Usually, so when we, when we do enter into like a contract to do one of these projects, yeah, we require, so.
They're within each job that?
Yeah, we like to save you that.
Now, you had, in one of your presentations, shown your top three things we need to consider. Out of all this stuff, do you remember what your top three were that you said you would think we should consider? Did you see that? I would just go back, go back and look at it. I had a couple of questions on it. I guess the one I asked you, like, if, if we're gonna do the HBAC, you know, we should do the roof at the same time. Because I think, oh, the two things that weren't on here, maybe it was an old report, you had mentioned windows in the high school, and you had mentioned windows in Mark Twain. Are they just not pri, they're not a big priority, so it's okay to not have them in here right now?
Well, I could put them in there.
Sure.
But, you know, it's, it's one of those things, I'm, I'm looking at these huge ticket items that we're trying to do. This is just a very general.
No, I think it's great.
But windows are not out of the question. The, the one issue that we're gonna run into with windows, and people are gonna like it, is the windows now that we have basically put in schools are all fixed windows, you can't open. That's, that's a huge downside to replacing windows.
So definitely don't touch our windows if we go out and you do anything like that.
But it's great, you know, I mean, they're energy savers, there's so many great things. You could be a great building and all that stuff, but there's also some downsides, too. So, you know, we gotta consider a lot of other things. So like, you know, with the windows at Mark Twain, I was required, the windows that you opened, I was required to do this and that.
Really?
Yes, it was a shock, but it's.
You know, with like all the intruder stuff and everything going on, that's interesting.
Yeah, so, but it is just the reality. And, you know, we come up against things like that all the time. You know, during the Mark Twain project, mid-project, we found out that now schools are not allowed to have blinds with, with struts on anymore. So we do a whole, yeah, so we had to do a whole redesign of our, our blinds. Stuff like that pops up all the time.
I think that's the big thing for me, is just the communication, that there are gonna be things that come up.
Yeah.
This, this, we're, you're not tying Andrew to this five-year plan.
No.
But we're tying him to communicating when we need to, to change, and that's work that we'll do together as the board and making sure that you're aware of. Things like, what I'm hearing is that the crowning didn't happen because it's not necessary yet. It may be necessary, but it's not yet. And so things like that, we just wanna make sure you're communicated with, so that you know that if you're in the community, you're able to share with the community.
Right.
It's not because you didn't do it because we didn't want to or anything, it's that it doesn't need it yet.
And that if things are approved, and then they're, they're pushed back or modified, it's just like when we take a course out or we put a new course in. The more communication we can have, and we can see, like, this is a great plan, and we have the one from before that you did, just, you know, moving them down from where they were and showing what moved up and why it moved up, there's just accountability, and there's things for people to be able to go back to and point to and say, this is why.
Ask questions.
But it goes back to, you know, originally when the prop was passed for the high school and middle school, you know, some of those items, that's where we kind of got into some, some challenges there on the communication. Things were taken out, now I see them, they're back in the five-year plan, which is fantastic. I, I really appreciate the transparency, because this gives us information that then we can go and handle some of those harder conversations. But staying in line with what, hey, we wanna go get this tax money to do X, Y, and Z, and oh, well, by the way, we're gonna do this instead, that's where we get out of line, and it's where we get in some trouble. So I appreciate you for pulling this together and making this public for everybody.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm very excited to have a finance and facilities committee that's in the BHS area.
Yes.
We, right by the middle school, right by the high school, the SD, you guys.
They are beautiful.
You've been talking about them since you started.
I didn't think I would ever get so excited about like a finance committee.
It makes a big difference. You did a great job.
I'm gonna go look down.
Thank you so much, Jamie. That was really, really helpful.
Okay, so next up, we have, switching gears completely from finance and facilities, or facilities, we'll get to the finance second half, is the SSD homebound students contract for 24-25. This is an annual renewal. Special School District sets their rate for their amount, and it's at $43.50 per hour should we have a student that receives homebound services and just requires board approval. So I ask for it.
I will make a motion that we approve the SSD homebound student contract for 24-25. Second?
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That is approved?
Wonderful. Next up, we're gonna turn it to the finance part of the finance and facilities. We'll have Matt Morgen come in to speak with us.
Good evening. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak about something exciting as finance. So in front of you first, we have an item for the annual secretary board report. This document is our preliminary documents, as each year we're required to submit our annual secretary board report, which is our financial information to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education by August 15th. We gave a whopping one point on our APR for me doing this on time. We completed this on August 8th. Included in this, again, these are pre-audited figures, so the final document that could be adopted by Department of. So, the final document that could be adopted by Department of Elementary and Secondary Education could change. So, this document is simply for information, doesn't require action or adoption at this time. Once our audit's completed, they will give us any kind of recommendations for changes. We'll make those changes because we don't fight with our auditors. And we will have a final updated document. That, uh, those final financial statements will be presented to the school board as part of our annual audit report, and that item will be actionable. Um, typically should do that multiple boards, give you guys comments, take a review. I don't know how many pages it's up to. But it's, it needs something to go to sleep to. It's great. Within the Annual Secretary Board Report includes our final December assessed valuation, our levies, our ending fund balances, any kind of transfers, and then also, uh, our debt payments and our debt balances. The document, um, you're gonna see a lot of fun function objects. All of those codes are mandated to us by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Secondary Education's Financial Manual. It's up to about eighty pages now. We add to that about every year. Sometimes they get updates. The, our software is allowing to submit in this format, and we work pretty diligently with the company on this. Are there any questions associated with the Annual Secretary Board Report?
What's the timing of the audit and the final report?
So, we need to be done by December thirty first. We are, so, right now, um, we have some transition of a position in my department, so we're trying to get that person up to speed. And then we're gonna have our field work. We want our field work done by the end of the month. Our hope is to do a lot of our work out of the web link, so they have a portal, we upload some data to that. Things that we don't feel comfortable uploading to that portal, they'll do onsite work, so we're gonna do personal files, payroll documentation. We're trying not to send those things electronically. I don't really care for Google Drive, but. I don't personally like the security of something that's free. So, um, our documentation is held by insured, um, and insured through front line system. A lot of those documents digitized and working to digitize all of our personal documents right now. But we don't like those documents going outside of our walls.
Thank you.
Next up for Matt Norrit is the final budget actual results for twenty three, twenty four.
So during June, uh, we had an actionable item by the Board of Education authorizing me to perform budget revisions and transfers throughout this the budget that was in place, uh, as part of our initial budget revision that happened last fall. We didn't have any further budget revisions during that time, so these are the results of those transfers. Um, the one thing that we did add to this is we did update our revenues to match our projections that had been, uh, shared with the school board earlier in the spring. So, the addition of two point three eight dollars was the recognition of the revenues that were already included in our budget projections. Those were significantly allocated, allocated to local revenues, investments, and there were small settlements for preschool and federal programs. This is an information item, and we're just reporting back. Are there any questions associated with the results?
And then next up is, again, Matt Norrit with the, uh, budget revision one, which is an action item.
This is an action item, thank you. Um, this is our first budget revision, so a big portion of this, um, item that's presented for action are purchase orders that were not paid for in the previous year. Part of our processes are, um, this is the second year of our process where we go for those unscheduled purchase orders into the twenty, the next fiscal year. So twenty three, twenty four, these purchase orders were adopted. They were part of that budget. When we closed the year, we had not kept those checks. So, this is the adoption of bringing four of those purchase orders into the twenty four, twenty five year, where we anticipate paying these purchase orders. So there's many things in this playground equipment, there are roofing projects, and many of the things that were just presented as part of the twenty three, twenty four spending for capital projects were budgeted last year, and we're bringing those dollars forward. So some of those dollars remained, they returned to fund balance. You know, that sounds weird. We didn't spend them, so you would've seen fund balance in the summary that was just presented as lower than what you're seeing the results in your XBR. It's because we had budgeted those dollars to be spent. We didn't spend those dollars. We brought that budget forward so that we can spend it in this year and complete the projects that you all have given us authority to use last year. The largest of these are, are completion of the graph project. We also have the final payments for ICS. Sorry, ICS we've already included in this. The total increase of the expenditures is two point seven million dollars. The amounts represent twenty-one thousand dollars for, um, prior year dollars in purchase orders from operations. Increased costs to support a kindergarten classroom expansion, increased cost for curriculum supply deployment. So, the curriculum program that was adopted earlier last spring, there was additional amount that was necessary to deploy those curriculum materials. Prior year expenditures for capital projects were two point four million dollars, which is the majority of the two point seven million. Insurance, um, one of the items that you wanna draw particular attention to, we talked about HVAC unit, you know, that was damage, water damage. The total cost of that project is two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, of which we anticipate revenues to offset that of two hundred and twenty-one thousand. Thousand dollars, so we had HVAC system that went down, and then we also had a, um, the dishwasher that we had to replace. The dishwasher was due to, it walked off the job site, and the, um. So, part of our, part, we obtain insurance as part of our instruction projects. So if there's a piece of, something that goes missing or is damaged during that, it's a responsibility of the contractor to secure the site, or our insurance covers the costs associated with that loss. This represents a piece of that, which was a dishwasher. Um, so that's the reason why there's a two thousand dollar difference, because there's two point seven million. The total change that we are presenting will impact a reduction of, we anticipate as a reduction to operations, operating fund balance of point three two percent. Are there any questions on the budget revision we have presented?
So do we, I need to make a motion?
Yeah.
So, I make a motion that we approve the twenty four, twenty five budget revision as outlined. Second.
Discussion. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's approved.
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we are gonna ask for approval, um, for, uh, HYA letter of agreement. It's an addendum to the original contract. As we know, HYA, uh, did the strategic planning, um, for us. And as I mentioned in the weekend update, uh, the board approved for HYA to help with the strategic planning process and to build a dashboard for, uh, to report out on the project and the progress for the strategic plan. The, this addendum was, um, there was a miscommunication between HYA and the district in letting them know that we wanted the dashboard. So they were not aware that we had wanted it because we didn't have an addendum. So, they've put it together. They are going to give us, uh, eighteen months for the cost of twelve months. So, we will get to have our dashboard for eighteen months instead of twelve. And there's, they're also piloting some other, um, professional development in support of the dashboard that, um, they're gonna be kind enough to let us use. I will actually be meeting with them next week to learn more about that, that they will be including in for free. So I just ask the board to approve this addendum.
I make a motion to approve the HYA addendum as outlined. Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's approved.
Thank you. Um, next up, we have a, uh, agreement to work with Monarch Immigrant Services Language Interpretation Services. Um, this is a translation service that we can, um, partner with. It's really an MOU, um, saying that we will partner with them should we need translation services. They can help, um, with whether it be translating for employees, but they can also help with, um, students and families and IPs. Their rate, actually for schools, um, is very competitive, if not lower than any of the translating services we've used before when we need for students. So this is just kind of adding to our toolbox of services that we can utilize if families should need them. Just ask for an approval of the MOU.
I make a motion that we approve Monarch Immigrant Services Language Interpretation as outlined. Second.
Discussion.
So, so do we, is this something brand new, or have we had any, um, language services in the past?
We provide tr- we, I would assume we do, I should say. I'm gonna look to my team over here. I'm hopeful that we provide translation services when needed. Yeah, this is just an additional one to, to build, um, capacity.
So we have, so we have a contract with, uh, with one right now, and this would be an additional one? Is there, is only, we pay only if we use it?
Yes, yes.
Just curious, do we feel like we need to, or the price is better? With this one than the other one? When does the other one?
I think it's also what languages are available and making sure that they have people that are available for a variety of different languages. Um, for example, when we hired our custodian, um, he spoke a language that is like, uh, many of the translation businesses didn't speak. And so being able to have access to a variety of resources to make sure you're covering a swath of languages should the need arise. And again, we only pay if we need them or if we use them.
So is, so this is, or I, I'm not really, I don't know if I'm following. So is this for our employees, or is this for our students' families?
Both. It could be for both.
Okay. Have we ever had one for employees and paid for them?
That I don't think we have had before.
And what, and what, I'm sorry, why do we need that now?
This was brought to our attention because of the custodian that we had hired, who was not, was, did not take the job.
Yeah, and that was. Yeah, I was under interpretation that that cost would be associated with that. I, I, maybe is it the same company? I don't, I don't recall. I thought, I thought the cost was gonna be completely, yes, included with that employee. Am I mistaken?
I think, yeah. Yeah, you can, that was.
So, um, with this, Monarch is actually much cheaper than the, uh, official translators that we often use for students. And again, this is only as needed. So we paid zero dollars. Um, I think that, do you know the rate for our other translators?
We can get to that.
Yeah, we can get you the information. But they are actually, um, much more affordable. And then in the event that we hire somebody from another language where we need one day of translation, we could actually now look at two different companies, find what is cheapest, and go with that. So this MOU actually saves us money and a hassle. In the event we need, hey, we need four hours of translation, this is a hard-to-fill position with a custodian or somebody that we think is actually gonna really benefit our community with diversity of equity, somebody to come with the team when we make a hire or somebody's not currently fluent in English. So, yeah, so it's just, it's much cheaper often than other translating, um, services we currently use. But we can then look at both companies, because this is just what they say they're billable, which is fifty dollars an hour, which is very competitive for that service.
So why do we need the other one then?
Um, in the event the language is like, so we have, we could get a student who shows up from rural China and speaks a dialect. This company might not have their, you know, their, so we, you know, it's good to have multiple vendors who can provide services for students or staff. Um, in the event we need a testing or something with student services.
But can't we just go with this one instead of the other one to do a vote? For everything, or?
Yeah. It, it, we would need to look, you know, cause it's not like, um, this, this company might not be able to translate for other languages. Um, so we're not like, like I said, this is for zero dollars. This is in the event we need a, this is their billable hour agreement. Uh, they have this with other school districts in the area. That's how we actually come out about it. So potentially though, in the future, if we needed translation services for a student during testing time, we could actually go to this company or other companies who are already approved vendors.
Do we have any concern about, is it similar to a construction bid? Did we put a bid out asking for additional comp- interpreter companies to look at? And with the company that we already have a contract with, be like, well, you didn't even give me a chance to bid and see if my price could come in lower and be compatible? I just wanna make sure that we're not doing anything that's going to jeopardize the other contract. And as small as we are, I kinda go back to Mark, like, why would we need to? And maybe now that other company that we are in contract with has broadened their horizons, and maybe they can offer more and have we even asked them before we do this.
We can look into that, absolutely.
I mean, I just wanna make sure we're covering all of our bases, since we already have a contract with them, so that they don't come back and say.
And these aren't contracts, or it's an MOU. So it's not like an actual contract. It's just, if you sign an MOU, then, you know, the billable hour per rate is fifty dollars an hour.
So if we would need to go with you.
Right.
Yeah.
And if I could just add the dimension of, in hiring interpreters to work with our families, flexibility can be really important because while this company may offer this particular language, um, they may not have an interpreter available at the time of date that we need one. And so we may choose to, to go with the other company. When it comes to things like testing or IP meetings that have to be held within certain time constraints, to have the availability of who we need at any given time. Since this is a fee per service and we're not bound to these contracts, but, which aren't really contracts, it is nice to have more than one option should a need arise, especially with.
And I, I think that the language, I think the language is important, because it's not a contract, like, we paid ten thousand dollars to our current services, or we are, it's, when we need you, we can contact you and work with you. Um, and so again, having more.
If we don't use any interpreter, they both cost us zero.
Exactly. So it doesn't, and, yes, there's no cost.
And if we've used an hour, it's fifty bucks. So it makes sense to have more than one available, because you got more options.
And then should the need arise.
And I think sometime with MOUs, so just for me at work, when we have MOUs with, um, interpreting services, we have a better rate. So it'll be like eighty-five dollars if we don't, this is at my job, if we don't have an MOU with them. But if we are in agreement that we'd work together on these projects, it's a lesser fee, which I'm guessing is the same case.
And typically, it's better to be proactive to the point that Ronnie was mentioning of, if we have two, and, I know we're small. It's more tools in your toolbox.
Yeah.
We have MOUs with a variety of universities. We do here at my previous forum. We had MOU with a variety of universities that we would take student teachers from, or that we would work with for our beginning teacher assistant programs. It was more just a matter of an agreement to work with whomever we could in that space, cause it's providing some similar skills. But again, um, kind of as the need should arise.
So what has been the need historically? Cost-wise?
For?
Each, just to handle.
Well, for, since I have been here, employee-wise, it's thus far has not been needed. But as we, um, look at, um, hiring people who are not English proficient for some of our jobs, it will increase. Student-wise, I think, you know, we probably have had these in the past.
Two and three and four thousand dollars.
A year?
Yes. So, that, when it comes to the hiring, I think this, this might be a better conversation for a closed session, cause I do have some questions, um, regarding that. So, I would, I would personally like to make a motion to, uh, not make a decision today, but move it into a closed session, because we are talking about potentially hiring.
I think also though, it's. Are you saying to make a motion to push off agreeing on an MOU right now?
Yes, because there is, is a need, uh, at least right now. It doesn't sound like it. But I think there's some hiring conversations that I think we should talk about in a closed session.
I feel like this is a pass. Maybe I'm thinking of it wrong, but it's a pass saying, like, we choose to engage together. And if we do, then we have our paths that we can do that, but we're not, we're under no obligation.
In the conversation.
For our students.
I know.
Why don't we?
I mean, it's worth a conversation, but that could be independent.
And then I guess my question is, this is a wonder, is. And then I guess my question is, this is a wonder is if paying for services for translation services, should we choose to hire somebody, is it a different conversation than agreeing to the MOU? I think we can have that conversation in, in closed session.
Yeah.
But the MOU is a broader piece to, more, is broader than.
So with this MOU and whatever MOU we have in place currently, I mean, are there any exclusivity language within it? I think the impression I'm getting is that there's not.
No, but I would say.
And that is common, districts may have multiple.
We could always table it, look at that contract and let's see what it says.
There's no urgency.
Right.
We can absolutely.
I see what you guys are saying and how it's good to have two, but I think since, I never even knew we had one, I would feel more comfortable seeing the contract or having someone look at it fresh again and see what it says, touch base with them and say, have you broadened your horizons? Can you do this language or that language? And then we can come back and, you know, feel more comfortable saying, yes, it's no fee, we get that, but just knowing.
So, but I would, I can kind of push back, like this is just an MOU to provide language services to our students if they need them. I would say, just for my background, there is a limited number of interpreters in St. Louis and if we have a timeframe where we need to have one for an IP meeting or a school meeting, I, I feel like we have, we're having two different conversations. One is about having a memorandum of understanding that if we needed interpretive services, costs us no money, we just are able to contact this company to see if they have somebody available for fifty dollars an hour. Under any circumstance that we would need interpreting services and our ELL population is growing, so I feel like our, it would just be nice for our staff to be able to utilize this outside of, we're talking about two, I feel like we're talking about.
But he's saying, we don't even know, and I'm saying, we've never seen the first contract.
No, I'm not saying that.
So we have no idea if there's any exclusive, exclusively, whatever the word is, in that contract.
I just ask, yeah, I think the understanding is that there is not exclusivity.
It's an understanding, but does anybody know?
I don't.
I don't know, I don't.
I'd like to see the other contract or, I, I think we should be able to look at them and be like, yes, it's offering the same and feel more comfortable accepting it.
Could there be a need over the next month to have interpretive services?
We have, we have the ability to get interpretive services, yes.
If we have, we have access to interpreters as needed.
Yes.
Yeah.
So yeah, so we do have need, it's not that there won't be a need and we can put the other, and we can update and put the other agreement in there so that we can see it.
I think that'd be helpful, just for us to have a context of, you know, what, what that other contract looks like so we compare an apple to an apple and then we can make that decision on how does this impact, you know, future hiring, how does this impact our students or staff, et cetera.
I want to offer that coming from a medical center, that there are various interpreters and translators. I also wanna offer that interpreting is spoken and translation is written. Just not that it matters, everyone understands our intent.
I mean, anyway.
But you can't always know, like you have to juggle, like we can on the same wall of patients and families have multiple different services just based on need. It's just about access.
Right, right.
And we could, you know, even talk to them about if we have families that need them at a doctor's appointment, maybe they'd even work one on one with our families, cause, you know, I know we've had children who have to go with their parents and need an interpreter because they have English and whatever.
Doctors have to have them. Yeah, so that, that's something that they already cover, which is great. I do, yeah, giving more opportunities for families to have a bit of communication, I think it's very important.
So, so the idea is to just get, put both of these in front of us next month and you're not gonna have any difficulties between now and then?
I don't think that's gonna cause any issues between now and then.
I mean, I don't agree with you, you shouldn't be agreeing. Don't say yes just because I asked you.
We, we have services, I think we will be fine. We wanna expand those services. It is totally fine if it make people feel more comfortable for us to look at other. We'll be okay, we'll bring it back, it's not a big deal.
All right, so that brings us into with the Board of Education. We have got Missouri Ethics Commission filing and we all, I guess I'm looking at Kate, we're, we're good for, everyone's gotten every, actually I'm looking here, maybe not everyone has it looking at yet.
Yeah, you'd have to look at the list and see, and this is coming from the Missouri Ethics Commission, is who's filed and who hasn't.
Okay.
So if you haven't filed, if the date was due, you know, at the end of December, that was due by May 1st, is here.
Okay.
I did file because I got charged one year, but it's not showing that I did. So I would go back through and, cause I.
Double check, but I, you know, if they update something, since I put this on here.
Okay.
Yeah, I mailed mine out.
Yeah, I mailed mine out. I mean, I even took a picture of the date, watching me put it in the post office box this year because I got fined last year, or the year before. So I'll go back and find that picture.
You can copy it, Kate, cause the form says you're supposed to file it not with the MEC and with your local.
No, I've never done that, I should do that.
I did not do that.
And you can mail it or you can have Kate email it, so that would be something to follow up on. The next one is a resolution, the Missouri Ethics Commission Conflict of Interest Resolution that is attached here, if I could get a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve the Missouri Ethics Commission's Conflict of Interest Resolution. Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved. And then we have eight MSBA policies that we went over earlier, so if I could get a motion to approve the policies as listed.
I make a motion to approve the MSBA policies as listed. Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is great, that is passed. Refreshers, I think this is what it looked like, that we've got board member refresher trainings and just make sure that you're completing those on time. That's for each of you to check. And when you complete them, make sure Kate gets an email or documentation that that has been completed.
No question, it's registration they represent, is that registered?
I think that, so I think that's what you register us.
Yeah, when I, when I register people to take the policy, so.
Yeah, and I think you registered me and I did it and so MSBA say, yeah, we got it, but you wouldn't get that information, right?
No, but I can, I can look at this sheet up there online periodically and see if it, if it's been, if they've updated it. Cause it'll say that it has a date on there, cause like someone can look that, and I know you're a complete.
Okay, so that, that's saying you were registered for the virtual period to take my rating too, I understand that.
So you maybe received an email or something. Maybe you checked that. The next, so we've got the Brentwood Economic Development Sales Tax Board Representative. We've had a board member, this is on a city committee, I don't know if you have a little more background after talking to Bola about this.
I don't have time for it.
So Jamie Allen and Keith Slusser have both been on it, they were treasurers.
And Mark Womer.
And Mark Womer, yes.
It is not a huge time commitment, based on what I understand, it feels like they only meet once or twice a year, but that there is an expectation when they pass the Economic Development Sales Tax back in two thousand twenty, that they would have a member of the school board, the school board serve on the committee, on the tax board review to, to review the economic development projects.
So I believe it's one, possibly two meetings a year. Generally, it's been the treasurer for the board, but it can be any board member, so probably just chat, talk, if anyone is interested in being on, are represented, they want that forward.
Do they have a meeting coming up anytime soon?
Oh, yeah, they do, cause they wanted this information last week.
Why the urgency?
Cause the meeting's on there, cause I asked for a, she would like, she wanted the date by like the fifteenth and I asked for extension.
Ryan Dobson.
Our treasurer.
I'll do it if there's no other interest in it. I could see you looking your eye that you were willing to do it, so I thought I'd call you up. I was looking her eye and seeing if she was interested in that. So, so is it all about the taxes or was this?
When they're looking at, at passing a tax, whatever, they want basically you come back and talk to all of us and tell us what it is and then you would go and speak on our behalf and say, we are supportive and we do a statement.
Okay.
Kinda like what we had to do before when we were not in a, we were not taking a stand on that one thing that just happened.
Okay, so that's what I was under the impression.
You basically go and you listen and they try and see if you can feel us all out or feel you out to see if you can speak on our behalf and if they're gonna get us to support them. It also helps us make sure that we don't go for a prop at the same time that they do and so we keep communication open so that they know what you're, we're looking at trying to go for a prop so that we kind of try and work with each other and not against or go to the tax person at the same time.
It, it looks like it is really just, it's on at least an annual basis, so it really is just one meeting and it is also just saying, you know, the projects they have coming up that they're gonna work on and giving feedback.
I mean, I, I actually would be interested in doing that because I, I think, you know, kind of some of the conversation that we've had today, I think there is some really good alignment there.
You could ask about the playgrounds and the different things like that.
I think that might be a good one too.
You scratch my back off, scratch yours.
I'm sure. Are you sure?
That's great.
So you're saying I nominated the wrong Ryan? Well, you're right. I was happy with Ryan.
And maybe you can go to one, Ryan can go to another one or something, you know?
Yeah.
Great, thank you, Ryan, that's great.
You have to vote on that.
I don't think we have to vote on it.
Yeah.
Just to get someone, okay, that's great. Great to keep an MSBA delegate report.
Uh, there's the Region Seven meeting coming up, you all got something about that. It was gonna be in the St. Louis City Schools, but they backed out, so now it's gonna be down in Jefferson County, Dunkland, is that Art Five, is that what it was?
I think so.
And that's September fourth.
Yep.
And you two are going, and I, Kate signed me out. Everybody else is welcome to come, you know, you don't have to, but you can. And then there's the Fall Conference coming up later.
Which is homecoming for us, so.
In Kansas City again. This time's gonna be a crowd center.
Okay. Yes, and so if you are able to go, Kate always helps us with registration, do you have a hotel room?
Do you want to carpool to Jefferson County?
It's possible, yeah, I was, I was like, where is this?
Yeah, it's not close, I'm surprised they chose it over.
Forty-five thousand.
The way this works is the regional executive committee, you know, tries to find districts who are willing to host these things. And Natalie Vow, who had been the St. Louis City School Board Representative on that committee and volunteered months and months ago, and then she decided to not be that anymore and this new guy is. So at her last meeting, we said, hey, you know, you guys are hosting us. He goes, really? That's interesting. But all the, I, I assume it's because of all the hubbub that's going on there with superintendent or whatever, so they decided these couldn't do it. So, and then Dunkland volunteered right away. Amy wanted to volunteer, but I said I wouldn't.
Yeah, told me, told me to wait. I like hosting.
I need you to not have to travel. That's true. That's true. Not to worry to keep in mind.
We will host in the future.
But, but honestly, yeah, I mean, and Amy and I talked about that and we can volunteer to do it and I think you're in favor of that, like next year or something like that, but there's, there's always a few people, a few districts that want to, you know, whatever. So that's the deal.
Good opportunity to show.
Yes.
Great. The next item, board goals, we're just gonna be working through items for the strategic plan. Dr. Zalinski will bring us up her goals in the next month or so. The board, oh, sorry, we didn't get to it yet. Yep, Board Committee update.
So on that, I know we're still kinda have the same committees and we decided where, I got the impression from one or two parents that they had reached out to find out when we were meeting again and they were like, and they were told when we were gonna reach out again and have new people apply. And like, well, what if we wanted to stay on? And I didn't know what to say. I don't think we're pushing anybody off, but if they want to be on again, they could or do they have to go through the whole process again and then we'll go over and do what we did last year? I didn't really know what to say.
So we're still working that out. So what, we wanna put out the communications that allow, cause there has been some tweaking, things like the student experience and some of them. So we would like to put out, I think Tony and I talked about in the next, polls, I believe we're gonna put that out there and then families, they would, if they wanna serve again, they will be able to serve again. We just have to work on, like, put that language in there. If we need them to fill out the form or do a short form for them, just because they may not be interested since it's gonna change in draft or if they wanna stay on, yes, we would wanna honor those.
Okay.
Been on the committees in the past, we would do that, we just have to work on the wording of that. So the hope would be that we would put that out next month and then start our meetings and structures.
And we talked about, I think, having two to three meetings a year generally with those, that whole group.
The whole group.
Any other thoughts on those? And we'll get those dates started soon, cause I know we're all ready to keep moving forward. And then there's a long list of upcoming events, some of them we've already talked about, including that conference in Kansas City, but you can take a look at our upcoming meetings, the Alumni All-School Reunion, February twentieth. Put a plug in, there is a race, a middle school Brentwood race that is also that same weekend, Brentwood Days. It's a fundraiser. Yeah. For middle school excursion and for cultural building at the sixth grade level with the new sixth grade camp. I'm working on it for a year and we hope that you will sign up.
Absolutely.
Lots of runners.
Oh, it can be a fun run.
Walkers.
Walkers.
Walkers are invited to walk with me.
And then there's an AI Educational Symposium, that would be the date before the main conference starts in Kansas City, so with those big conferences, there's always additional things that you can, you can go a little early to learn about. So I encourage anyone that's able to go, it's a great, great place to learn more about what's happening with school boards around the state. Wear our Brentwood gar, our matching t-shirts.
Yes, and even, we didn't even open up with that.
They didn't.
It should've been part of our spotlight on Brentwood, your new shirts.
Great.
Can I, real quick, the meeting on September third is actually not a policy meeting, it's our workshop, it's the first workshop we've had. And I, and I put it in the weekend update, but I will give a shameless plug to it. Please email me any questions you want addressed. Sean Parker is working on a presentation, the focus on cybersecurity and data, privacy particularly, and then we also have Flavio Esposito who's gonna come and just kinda talk to us a little bit about AI and the workforce and how he sees it in his role. So if you have questions around any of those topics or anything related to technology, it is easier for them to answer your questions that night if they are able to prepare it. So I appreciate that.
There was two policies attached to the, were those something that we were supposed to be told, there was something added to them or whatever? And then I had a question actually, cause it was showing like the district days that we may observe.
This was one of the policies we, that was included.
That was in the link.
Okay, so those two were called out for any particular reason?
I don't think.
Just a quick question, so if the district may observe the following days, could we, when we're doing a calendar, if we've been told by the state of Missouri we can observe them, would then those not, would we have, like when we're looking for professional development days to take off or things like that, or like a mental health day or whatever, would it help us in our days when we're trying to look at the calendars and not go against us? And could we kinda kill two birds with one stone? I just thought I would throw that out there.
I think it's worthy of having this out and available when, when we're making the calendars, I don't think it hurts, I think some of them, like, for appreciation, they were probably solid.
Right.
Some of the other ones, yes, I don't think it's a bad thing to have it out while we're building, and I think, you know, like the Holocaust remembers, things like that, making sure that we pray and accordingly, you know, what days are on there.
Yeah, I was like, oh, maybe we.
I think it's definitely something you can out all.
We're always looking to waste it.
Two birds, one stone with the calendar.
That's great. Great, anything else on the board? If you get a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
All in favor?
So, this came up as I was, as we were closing. So basically, we looked at the five-year plan tonight, is there any date for the finance and facilities to meet up? So basically we looked at the five-year plan tonight. Is there any date for the finance and facilities to meet up?
We have cabinet tomorrow to follow up on conversation today. And then we will get you those pieces of information.
So you'll have a, you'll have a meeting tomorrow or you're going to set a meeting date and then you'll go over?
To talk about when we want to meet.
So then you'll look at the dollars that you had sent us a couple of weeks ago?
Yeah.
And those committees will get together and then something else would be coming back to us for us to decide, here's five items that we're suggesting that we should.
They'll come to the greater board. Yeah, that would be the.
After the financing facilities.
Yeah, after. But that's what we'll talk about. We're talking about it tomorrow.
Okay.
So I kind of just want to tune that out and have this base setting and then we'll get those.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, sorry. That was a session. Yes, roll call. Please, sorry. We're doing roll call to close everything. That's okay. Kate's keeping us.
Yes.
Ryan Dotson?
Yes.
Ryan Finn?
Yes.
Keith Redner?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Now we always used to adjourn to closed sessions. We need a roll call vote for that, but we don't need that.
We don't need it to.
We don't need to.